Welcome to our special Board of Education meeting for November 11th. Please take a moment to silence your cellphone and then join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Secretary Hatfield, can you take a roll, please?
Yes. President Roush.
Here.
Vice President McFarland.
Here.
Secretary Hatfield is here. Treasurer Lotterbach.
Here.
Member Blasey.
Here.
Member Ringgold.
Here.
Member Horowitz.
Thank you, John. Before we get started today, I just wanted to say Happy Veterans Day to everybody that's a veteran, whether you're in the audience, one of our staff members, or an alumni, or a parent. Obviously, our veterans have given a lot to serve this country and provide for the freedoms that we all enjoy. It was really special to read about the Veterans Day event that Midland High hosted and see all of the different veterans that the students got to interact with. I believe one of our veterans that joined our students was 99 years old, I think I read, from World War II, and all the way up to people actively serving today, so really special interaction for our students. And then, so thank you. And then, second, just want to acknowledge on November 5th, our community elected Ann Horowitz to another term, so congratulations, Ann. And then Mekki Craig for her first term. So Mekki's joining from the audience tonight as her term will start on January 1st. Congratulations to you both. At this time, we have our request to address the board for public comment and look forward to hearing from people tonight, and then we will get into the bulk of our meeting after public comment, which is our facility workshop. I have on my list today Joe Bonadie's. Joe?
Greetings. First, thank you for updating the survey presentation online to again show that 26% of the survey respondents can't support either proposal. I'm sure it was just an oversight. From the frequently asked questions section, I find it even more interesting that 16% of MPS employees also do not support either proposal. Again, I will mention that you are obscuring the total mileage aspect of this upcoming bond. Your recently updated frequently asked questions had that question and the answer was not clear. You blew off the part of their question about total and only answered the part about longevity. So for the public, here's an example. $100,000 taxable home value is going up in taxes from approximately $295 per year to over $600. For those that live paycheck to paycheck, I hope you have an extra $320 available when taxes are due. Moving on with the inflation likely cooked in near term, I'm having trouble believing you can actually afford to do this for the costs projected. When the vote for the 2015 bond went through with resistance, it was not clear to many, including myself, that you were promising the current and future value of our houses to your creditors. Lastly, there was an election last week. There may be downstream consequences to what happened, all the way to eliminating Department of Education and/or severely restricting DEI programs. And those dollars, like in most districts, are the slush funds that keep you afloat. Please plan accordingly. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the board?
Okay, sorry about that. My name is Jessica Burdick. I just want to say, out of the 1,600 people that took the community-wide survey from the last meeting on October 21st, it seemed that the MPS school board refused to accept the feedback that was received from the survey. The data should speak for itself. Scenario A received 49.66% of the community-wide support where Scenario B only received 4.66%. It's clearly obvious that the community would maybe support Scenario A on the ballot versus Scenario B. Also, loss of opportunities for students, including sports, clubs, music, et cetera. There would only be one valedictorian instead of two. More competitions for school scholarships, and some kids will miss out on opportunities due to combined enrollment. Also, costs that would increase taxpayers' yearly taxes. Many are struggling financially and cannot honestly pay much more. And then, what I didn't get a chance to prepare, at last month's meeting, Kelsey Burke Meyer, I think her name was, did her presentation on the focus panel and survey, and I took a picture of the screenshot instead of trying to fastly write it all down. It was divided in between 1, 2, 3, 4 different categories. A non-parent that does not have children attending MPS. A business owner in the public schools district. An elected official residing in the Midland Public School district. And public school employees. Nowhere on there was a parent of a student at Midland Public Schools. So, I mean, obviously, us parents took the picture. Phil Roush, I see you having a questionable look on your face. I have the picture here if you'd like me to bring you my phone.
I believe you. Make sure.
But maybe it got lost in translation, maybe I didn't understand it clearly, but my picture of her slide does not have a parent input on there, and why wasn't our voices put into that survey and what the parents of the school board wanted, or the parents of the students wanted? That's all I have for you tonight. Thank you.
Anybody else care to address the board? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emily Dixon. I'm PTO president, Woodcrest Elementary, parent of a Jefferson student and a Woodcrest student. And I just asked today, tonight, as we're looking through these proposals, that we're thinking of how they both help the issues we're seeing now. As I mentioned last month at the meeting that I spoke at, I have a second grader at Woodcrest. Second grade at Woodcrest has five sections. She has 23 kids in her class. I didn't dig into numbers at other schools, but I can tell you from past experience, her first grade class had 27, and I know another elementary school, Plymouth or Central Park, had 17 per class. So, as we're looking at proposals, the thinking, not that it's our job to bring people to Midland, it's not, you know, our job is the board or community to build brand-new shiny buildings, but these elementary schools that are way too full, Seaburton and Woodcrest being the two of them, how to level that so kids aren't getting all the same education, all the same attention, that we're addressing what staffing might look like in either of these scenarios, whereas staffing now is a struggle. And these schools, that we are looking at how feasible facility upgrades are in the timeline that is going to be proposed, because I'll tell you every elementary school playground in the city of Midland, with the exception of maybe Central Park, is pretty rough and sad. So, we're looking at the whole student, which I mentioned last time, it was the first time I had heard that term. When it comes to outdoor play, we're failing our kids. When it comes to making school of choice a priority above a reasonable class size for parents and for teachers and for students, we're failing. When it comes to just giving the same experience at every single elementary school, the middle schools, the high schools, I can't speak for all three levels, but there's work to improve there. So, as we're looking at what these proposals can do for our current issues in a reasonable amount of time, I ask that those be the things that we look at, instead of trying to appeal to new residents to Midland or that sort of thing. So how we can address those things, and that maybe my second grader at Woodcrest would have a really cool playground by the time, before she leaves in a few years. So that's what I ask of tonight, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Jennifer Farron, and I'm here tonight speaking from the Timpano Band Board at Northeast. Some of our concerns for the parent band board are the equity in the music education, to make sure that not only do all kids get the chance, but that it doesn't become an issue of only those that can afford private lessons can try out and play. Staffing, would we lose teachers because they were hired for one thing and now teach different grades? Building space for classrooms. The bandrooms are used all day long. They are planning on building two bandrooms, two choir orchestra rooms to accommodate all the kids who want to play. You would have to purchase new uniforms, rebranding the music programs, signs, clothes, et cetera. How do you plan to supplement the cost of the music programs that parent groups are currently paying for, because now they will have to start all over with getting new nonprofit status under different names, which means there could be a gap in funding while we recreate all new groups. Lack of opportunity because there can only be so many first chairs and drum majors, et cetera, and there would be a lot more competition that would be increased. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Melissa Buchek. I'm here today to share some data that the community may not be aware of, but it is publicly available, as I gathered it from the district and state website. I found it interesting in last month's meeting, as you were reviewing the community survey data, how you fall to the public for not understanding the district's needs, the critical needs, and I hear people here speaking to some of them. I went home and I thought to myself, do you, as the Board of Education, really understand the critical needs? Or, and is it really more real estate projects? From the data, I first want to point out that the MPS district-wide student enrollment has been declining for 15 years. Here's a graph. I don't have somewhere to prop it up right now, but the blue line here is enrollment. And I'll explain a little more on the graph in a minute. Looking back to 2015, the last time you had a bond measure, Superintendent Michael Sherrill wrote an editorial in the Midland Daily News to persuade voters ahead of that vote. He said, MPS, sorry, my thing is scrolling on me. MPS, MPS prior to 2015 bond approval owned 19 buildings. However, as a result of the extensive MPS facility study and student enrollment study done in 2014, we know that 11 MPS buildings will make the district right-sized for the next 12 to 15 years. Following the passage of the 2015 bond, MPS subsequently closed seven buildings. Now, just nine years later, you're proposing to ask the public to fund two new schools with fewer enrolled students than in 2015. So why, so the question is, is that fiscally responsible, and why are the MPS schools overcrowded? And one of the previous speakers was just alluding to the fact of school of choice, and all 11 of your school buildings for 2024, 2025 school year had open seats posted for resident and non-resident students to come in for school of choice. So while I fully support school of choice, I wonder if you're encouraging the overcrowding, perhaps just to increase the headcount for more per pupil funding. Back to this graph. I feel this gives you and your voters a good glimpse of how fiscally irresponsible MPS Board of Education has been. In 15 years, per pupil spending has increased 20% of the red line here. While reading proficiency has dropped 17.5%, and as already said, enrollments dropped 11%, so why aren't student score and achievement recognized as the critical need? 10 years ago, the MPS Board of Education put the taxpayers on the hook for nearly $300 million bond, and today, there's little to show for it. Are you over the wrong target? Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else?
Hello, I'm Marion Fitzgerald, and a grandparent of a MPS student. And as an accountant, after seeing everything last time laid out, it just doesn't make sense to me to be projecting out to charge taxpayers in the future instead of looking to your future, as some of the others have said. And from my own experience in having to have moved to different schools when I was in elementary and junior high, and then a different one, of course, high school, smaller schools are really better for the children. Therefore, I'm with the others that combining the two high schools and some of the other schools is not really a good thing for our kids and grandkids and all the other kids. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. With that, I will close the floor for public comment. Want to make sure that I address one thing. I have here the focus panel survey data review that Kelsey shared with us. On Slide 1, it says that the focus panel overview was Midland Public High School students, longtime residents, business community leaders, nonprofit partners, support staff, preschool and elementary parents, preschool and elementary teachers, secondary parents, and secondary teachers. Double-checked, and this is the same presentation that is posted on our website right now, so if anybody thinks that we did not involve parents, like, just completely inaccurate.
Yeah, so, sorry, I don't remember the title of this. Focus Panel and Survey Data Review, Pages 15 and 16, Slides 15 and 16 were survey demographic breakdown. And, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name. Jessica? Jessica, so, yep. So you had a screenshot of 16, but 15 has breakdowns of, the breakdown, or the categories are apparent with children attending Midland Public Schools, and then second category, a parent with children attending another school district, third one, a parent who homeschools their children, and then four, a Midland Public School student.
So there's two slides.
Yeah, so there's two survey demographic breakdown slide pages or slides.
Thank you for the feedback. We'll get into our discussion tonight. I think one of the things, just to kick off before we get too far into this, wanted to talk about is, why do we think about bonds? When a school has a general fund, a general fund, probably 85, 87% spending on salary wages and benefits for our teachers that teach our kids every day. That means you've got 15% roughly of your budget to spend on extracurriculars, transportation, keeping the lights on, roofs, tech, and anything else that makes a school function, including uniforms, paper, printers, all the above. If, as we have done for the very first time in 2015, as a district, a school district passes a bond for facilities, we can relieve some of the pressure on the general fund to focus on students. We did that again two, three years ago with an energy enhancement, energy enhancement bond, where we used future energy savings by upgrading our facilities to pay for certain capital enhancements. Again, relieving pressure on the general fund to pay for success of our students. As we look forward to 2025, potentially looking at a bond, we have 11 buildings in our fleet that are all about the same age old. We've got one new building in the fleet, and everything else was built sometime between 1930 and 1967. Everything's old. It costs a lot of money to put a new roof on a building, to put a new boiler in. It's a staggering amount of money just to keep these things going. So as we look at a potential bond, what we're asking our community for help with is continued relief on the general fund so that we can pay for the academic success of our students. That's what we're asking for help with. So as we get into this, I'll turn it over to Penny. She's took our questions from the last meeting and tried to work with various stakeholders, whether it was the group that conducted the survey, to pull out of the data and surveys a lot of the answers, as much as we could, to the questions that we had. We've got Barton Mallow here to answer any questions that may come up. They don't plan to present tonight, but wanted them on standby just in case we had specific questions. But then, as Penny has worked through our questions, has been able to try to answer those, and then will lead us through the discussion tonight. Turn it over to you, Penny.
Thanks. Good evening, everyone. I think I'm going to sit here since we unplugged the mic. Is Dale, so Dale from French Associates is with us virtually as well, also to respond to specific technical questions, and thanks to Daryl for being here. I've also asked this whole team over here to please be prepared to chime in, to be prepared to respond to any of your inquiries. You know, we have expertise as a team and have been really exploring these opportunities together. So I've asked them to ensure that information we're putting out here for conversation is accurate, and if they hear something that doesn't sound quite right, to please feel welcome to offer a kind correction, because we do want the most factual information as you all grapple with some decisions that are coming ahead. I want to frame tonight first by just reminding us how exciting this opportunity actually is. Our opportunity to do good work for students and our staff and our school community, and we did put two possible scenarios out there for consideration, both exciting, both creating a really bright future for our schools. And now comes the time where we have to start understanding what we might put on a ballot proposal, and if we're ready to do that. So our plan for this evening, let me see if this is on. All right, how about if, did I just do that? Sorry. Could you advance the slide, please? While she's figuring that out, I'll just talk us through what I see, sort of the flow of our conversation tonight being. I want to start with some essential agreements. We do this with our students and our staff whenever we have dialogue, to make sure that we all are kind of working in the same space with the same working agreements. We'll then provide an outcome slide to discuss what our outcomes are for this evening, a brief review of our journey. I think it's important that we remind ourselves of the critical infrastructure and critical needs, as well as what Scenario A and Scenario B has to offer. And then, as Phil said, follow up on some of your specific questions that emerged from the October meeting, as well as our study committee sessions over these last several weeks, and then we're really going to open it for dialogue and consensus building. Next slide, please. I'll give you a moment just to look at these essential agreements, and just signal to me if you feel that you can agree to these. We're going to create a safe and respectful environment for open dialogue, not debate, but dialogue. Engage and contribute is an expectation from everyone on the team. Listen, seeking to understand and assuming positive intent from one another. Being clear in your communication. My team knows I like to say clear. Clear is kind. We're being kind when we're clear in what we're articulating. Be solution-focused. Work toward consensus. Keep students' best interests and the district vision at our forefront. Can we all agree to working in that direction? Great. Next slide, please. Our outcomes for this evening are first, to reach consensus about your readiness as a board to put a ballot proposal out there for May of 2025. We've all along said that one possible outcome of this journey right now is that we might pause, and so I just want to remind us that that is one option. Should we think we're ready, then we need to reach consensus about those essential components of a bond proposal. And the bullets that you see there represent those broad areas of what would appear in a ballot proposal. New construction, infrastructure, remodeling or renovations of existing facilities, buses, technology, furniture, additional projects, and then the approximate cost of where we want to come in at. I want to remind us that consensus, for our sake this evening and moving forward, is a general agreement from the seven of you. I also want to remind us that we're not leaving tonight, if we do reach consensus on Item 1, and we're getting consensus toward Item 2 and those components, we're not leaving tonight with a detailed list of every single project and the exact cost. What we're looking for tonight is enough consensus that, as an admin team, we can leave here and begin working with our team at French and Barton Mallow to really begin to put together what that program will look like, and that's what we'll come back to you for a recommendation at the November 18th meeting. Please ask detailed questions. I'm not discouraging that, but I think it's, I think tonight isn't about getting into the weeds of, well, which restrooms are we going to renovate at the high schools, right? It's the overarching program that we're speaking of. Any questions about those outcomes? Next slide, please. I want to remind us of our journey so far. I'm leaning in, is the audio okay if I lean in? All right. I want to remind us of our journey so far, that we did have a very collaborative facility assessment process. It involved building leaders, athletic directors, and department leads. And again, we shared this with you back in December of '23. We then took that data and really worked through to analyze it with the help of our team at Barton Mallow and French Associates. Our FFO subcommittee, our study committee, was really helpful in analyzing that data, studying it to help us as an admin team emerge with some possibilities for our future. It's been collaborative throughout, and I'm really proud of that. It's also how we landed on the priorities and the scenarios that emerged to share with the community. Next slide, please. I'll remind you of these priorities. I'll give you a minute to take a look at those. I'll remind us that enhancing safety and security. I think I've heard from all of you individually and collectively that student safety will remain our top priority, ensuring that our facilities are the safest they can possibly be is important. And that starts with our physical safety from our structures. Replacing critical infrastructure, being good stewards of the resources we have and appropriately investing to get the maximum life out of those facilities is important. We do need to address aging facilities. We'll talk about that in a moment. Facility utilization, particularly at our elementaries. Expanding pre-K offerings and being ready for that universal preschool that's coming our way. Improving educational program spaces and upgrading arts, athletics, and play. This discussion topics is a slide we've used as we've had conversations throughout the community, including our community information session. And so I just want to put a little bit finer point on a couple of these. We are really proud of the work that happened through the 2015 bond in upgrading our facilities, secure entrances and other components. We're a good first start. We know that's an ongoing game, right? We need to continue to keep fresh in our safety and security practices and ensuring that our facilities have the latest technology. And this will be a continued part of our work moving forward. Critical infrastructure, I just want to add to this aging facilities and investments. Phil, you mentioned the average age of our building is sixty-five. I think that's accurate with two of our schools already at end of useful life. And we've talked repeatedly about Carpenter Street Elementary and Northeast Middle School. And I believe the feedback we've received from the community tells us that it's been known. And we planted that seed since the 2015 project. Space utilization and facility needs. This has continued to emerge as a really important part of our conversations all along. We know that our, and I'm going to bundle this a little bit with enrollment projections. Our enrollment projections are solid. We are stable. We are really proud of that. We recognize that might be surprising to some because the trends throughout the state don't mirror that. Our data indicates stable enrollment. Interestingly, though, is we know that enrollment shift is a little more to the north. So yes, we do have crowding at several of our elementaries, Seibert, Woodcrest, being two of the leading ones. But honestly, all of our elementaries are fully used. I think Brian described for us previously, we do not have an open classroom. Interventions are happening in hallways. The beautiful maker spaces that we designed for intentional learning have been used now for classrooms. The ESA continues to require additional space, and that's putting a lot of pressure on our elementary buildings for space. I think we have strong data to show that that is one of our leading needs, is space in our elementaries. I'll also add, and I know this is in the FAQ, some questions about art on a cart, as we call it. Our elective classes have been forced to travel to classrooms rather than having their own dedicated space, which is not the kind of learning experience we want for our students and certainly not the kind of teaching environment we want for our staff. Pre-primary education trends, I think we're all pretty well aware of what's happening there and how exciting that opportunity is to increase across our community preschool enrollment, particularly for four-year-olds. And certainly want to take a look at the three-year-old program we have as well and see if there's opportunities to expand that. We want to be ready, and that is in combination with the elementary conversation. Technology and CTE programming, we'll share a little bit more about that as we proceed. I really believe a point of pride for Midland Public is that we value all pathways for students, and we do provide some really terrific CTE programs. Those are in need of a refresh. I also believe there's just immense opportunity for us to think about what the future holds in CTE and other emerging program spaces and being ready for that and having space that's flexible and ready. I'll pause to see if the team has anything they want to add to that description. Okay, moving on to the next slide. All right, here's where I want to remind us, and I say this with a smile. I think we've been very engrossed in this conversation about Scenario A and Scenario B. I want to remind us that this slide represents work that's happening or potentially happening through this bond across the district, whether it's Scenario A or Scenario B. Now, I will say the dollar values will be adjusted accordingly based on Scenario A or B. But I think it's important for me to remind you of some of these really amazing projects under play. And this is where I'll ask any of the team to chime in. So I'll start with some examples of infrastructure work. And I'm going to lead with safety since we talked about how important that was. In this project, there are select glass upgrades so that we can have impact-resistant glass in key places across our district, as well as adding emergency alert systems and replacing our speakers, which is actually very much a safety consideration. Roofing is a significant component of these infrastructure upgrades. I believe in the video I created, I shared that by 2026, fifty-five percent of our roofs will be twenty years old and out of warranty. This is a great example of what Phil said at the top of our session. There are certain things that we could use general fund for, but this is an opportunity to maintain general fund dollars for classrooms for teaching and learning and use a bond to pay for these. Also in this, are renovating original restrooms in our secondary schools, replacing flooring that's over twenty years old, replacing a chiller at Woodcrest, a bus loop at Adams, site drainage improvements across the district, replacing concrete walks, curbs, and parking lots, replacing HVAC equipment at the high schools and middle schools, including air conditioning in the Midland High Gym. Some of the examples in the student achievement section. At our middle schools, we are going to improve or renovate some of our CTE feeder program spaces. I think we've all talked about that connection from middle school to high school for career pathways and career opportunities. This includes life skills, classroom renovations, and also some science lab renovations. At the high schools, we're renovating original classrooms. We've spoken before about how many of those are original to the build. We will also be renovating the Exploratorium, which is that science space at each high school, the life skills classes and CTE programs, and creating space for emerging programs. At elementary and middles, we're going to create intervention and student support spaces. I'll pause there just for a minute if there's any additional details that. Okay. Under arts, athletic, and play, art, band, choir renovations, band equipment, which has been identified as a key need, band tower and storage improvements, playground equipment, resurfacing, and site drainage. And I just want to remind us that these playground upgrades are part of our push for equity, ensuring that our playgrounds are accessible to all students regardless of ability or disability is really important, and that's part of this work. At Dow High on the athletic front, concessions, storage, restrooms, band tower and press box, baseball and softball fields, parking, and then some interior renovations such as locker rooms. And at Midland High, some similar work with locker room renovations, baseball and softball fields, and various site improvements. The stadium, the community stadium, we have planned work for restrooms, concessions, and team rooms as well as some storage. And I think looking at the entry, ensuring that we can have a more secure entry point. At middle school, track and field improvements, storage, exterior courts, and locker rooms as well. Along the bottom, I don't want to forget those, technology. And this is where I'm going to look to my technology friends. Network and wireless infrastructure, telecommunications systems, printers, copiers, student and staff devices, and general classroom technology. Again, Phil mentioned these. This is another area where we could pay for those out of general fund, but this is a great opportunity to use bond funds. Buses on a six-year cycle, I think our last quote was one hundred fifty thousand per bus. And we know that we want to continue replacing our buses on a good cycle. And finally, furniture. A lot of the furniture in our high schools are original, sturdy but not flexible, modern kind of furniture that we want for the learning environments and kind of teaching and learning practices that we want for our students and our staff. I'll pause there just for a moment before we move into the scenario recap and just see if there are any particulars that you want to follow up on. And you'll have a chance to do that later, too. Okay, next slide. These will look familiar to you. Just a quick recap of Scenario A. Scenario A involves building that new elementary school. All of our elementaries will become pre-K through grades five. Carpenter Street Elementary will come offline, as will Northeast, and we will build a new middle school. This maintains our current grade structure and configuration overall. I want to remind you that Jefferson will receive considerable renovations to make it as comparable to the new build on the Northeast site as possible. And all of those things that we just mentioned, plus more happening at our high schools should this scenario be selected. It is important to recognize that with this scenario does come school attendance boundary adjustments. When we put that new elementary in, we will need to adjust those boundaries to balance enrollment across those elementary schools. Scenario B, again, looks familiar to you all, but just to quickly recap, this scenario calls for a reconfiguration of our grade levels. You'll see that our elementary numbers remain the same. However, it's a pre-K through four model. We would take the current Dow High campus and create an intermediate school model with grades five and six, a junior high model at what is currently the Midland High Campus, and create a seven through nine school, and then construct a new high school grades ten through twelve. In this scenario, Carpenter Street Elementary does come offline, Northeast comes offline, and Jefferson is still available for potential repurposing. This was also part of our original conversations, these auxiliary facilities. I'll just give you a minute to refresh your thinking on those. I'll also say these did not come necessarily as part of the facility assessment, but were included in our conversations because they emerged through feedback that we had been hearing from our community. The potential for a thousand-seat stadium, a competition pool, a new stadium, and a dedicated robotics space. I'll offer that several of these were bundled with Scenario B primarily because of the consideration that if a new high school were built, would our community desire to have a full campus with all of those amenities in proximity to the school? I know we received some feedback that there was interest potentially in some of these auxiliaries outside of the connection to Scenario B exclusively, and we'll have a chance to talk about that. I'll give you a moment to refresh your thinking on this slide as well. You'll see that Scenario A comes in at about two seventy-seven with a three-point-two-five millage increase. Scenario B at two forty-seven with a three-point-one estimated millage increase. And then B with those auxiliaries is at that top end at three twenty-four. These estimates include the construction, the renovations, the infrastructure we talked about, the potential purchase of land, and all of those other details. Next slide. Quickly reminding us of community feedback. This is the only visual I've offered. You have those packets in front of you, and they're available, of course, on our website, and Kelsey did a nice job of giving us an overview. I chose this one because it is a summary slide that reminds us of the focus panel and community survey and really where that favorability lands primarily of those who took the survey and participated in the focus group. We know that at your urging, Kelsey and team went back and worked to further analyze the survey comments to understand if there was additional insights we can gain, and we're going to talk about those here in just a minute. Moving into the follow-up questions. So I wanted, just for the sake of clarity, remind everyone that not only were questions generated at the October board meeting by all of you, we then held our series of board study committees. And I had individual conversations with each of you to, sorry, to answer any questions you might have and see what other information was needed. So these slides represent that in totality. You did ask Kelsey to dig and see if the survey data comments offered any additional insights about pre-K being distributed out as we have in Scenario A and Scenario B versus a center-based, because we received some feedback that there might be some questions about that. The analysis of those comments, the findings were inconclusive. Didn't really lend one way or the other, center-based or distributed. I'll remind us, however, that Scenario A had the highest favorability, and that did include a distributed model. So I think we can remind ourselves that there is a certain affinity for that distributed model. Ken and our curriculum team did a great job digging into some research. I want to acknowledge that we had support from a colleague of ours who works at CMU, who also gave us some additional research. And frankly, there isn't research to necessarily support one model over the other. What it is clear is that there are quality program indicators that we really must consider, whether it's a center-based program or a program out in an elementary school. And interestingly, we've considered those over time as well. It's what we've used to develop our programs, and we're really proud of that. And we'll need to continue thinking about that as we advance our preschool programs. I do want to acknowledge that through conversation, some ideas emerged. Well, what if we built a standalone pre-K center? So our friends went ahead and analyzed that, and you can see the estimated cost for that is thirty-one million dollars. An idea emerged also, if, what about a compromise? What if we concentrate our preschool programs in two of our elementaries and build an additional wing or enhance one area of the school? And that is surprisingly forty-two-point-six million dollars. But when you really think about it, that makes sense because you're two additions with all of those specifications. I think this slide in totality tells us that the most cost-effective model is what's part of Scenario A and B already, the distributed model. And given that research doesn't necessarily favor one over the other, it's what we make it. Grade span configuration was a question that you wanted to dig into further, and the analysis of those survey comments was also inconclusive. With the exception of ninth grade, there was considerable feedback through the comments that the primary concern was ninth grade not being part of that traditional high school experience. I'll also remind us that Scenario B with those grade level modifications was not necessarily favored by our community and that A had higher favorability. Here's another one where the research unfortunately is inconclusive. You can find a variety of grade level configurations with strong student outcomes. I sort of liken it back to what we just talked about with pre-K. It's the quality of the teaching and learning experience that we provide, and certainly our teachers play a big role in that. The literature does, however, remind us that transitions are challenging. So each time a student transitions, and we had already talked about that and knowing that we needed to bolster programming. Ancillary facilities. So auditorium, at the urging of the board, I did have an additional conversation with our friends at the Midland Center for the Arts to understand if it was possible for us to enhance our partnership by renting additional space. us to enhance our partnership by renting additional space. They are favorable to that opportunity. Once we know the specific scale and scope and dates that we need, they are happy to sit down with us and talk about how that might fit into their calendar. I will say I learned a great deal about some of the limitations that they have, given the nature of their industry, and have a better sense of what that could look like for us. So I want the board to know that there are possibilities there to rent space for those events that we have where either audience space or stage space is a problem for us. Anna did some additional digging along with JR, who manages our auditorium, and of the 44 ticketed events, 22 we have either a concern with stage being large enough or with capacity for audience. We did work with our friends here at Barton Mallow and French to take a look at the possibility of renovations to Central, and interestingly, we did that back in 2015 as well, and the response hasn't changed. It is nearly impossible. The two-story configuration of that building really precludes us from making significant renovations. We could make some renovations that would change the stage. It would only make it deeper, though, not wider, and that doesn't solve the fullness of our issues. The pool, we have had some opportunities to dialogue with the Midland Community Aquatics Committee, and you all might know that Jen sits on that committee, Jennifer Ringold, as does Brian, and we met recently. Jen, do you want to offer any insights? Are you good with me giving a summary? Okay, great. So, great conversation. I'll, again, just remind us, the three entities that own pool assets in town are the city, Greater Midland, and us. And lots of data that we had an opportunity to look at around pool use and what the anticipated need is. The committee feels great about Midland Public's commitment so far to being good partners through the upgrades we've made with the district pool at Dow High. The city is making a strong commitment with their work at Plymouth, and great usage out of the Greater Midland new pool. The one consensus we absolutely have is that whatever the solution is for our community must be a shared endeavor, that the cost to build, operate, maintain a pool is steep, and for one entity to have that burden, I will say, is unfair in a community like ours. What really emerged was what we see as our best opportunity moving forward is the master plan that Greater Midland has right now. And I think you all know that part of their master plan is additional pool space, and although they're not ready to move forward with that yet, the promise of that is good for our team, and knowing that we would be part of that solution, as would the city. Jen, what would you add to that?
That was an awesome summary. I think the really key things of that is pool utilization, right? And the idea of how we are trying to figure out a way to maintain the current aquatics program that we have, which are exceptional, and how to do it in a way that is cost-effective for our entire community. And I think that that, serving on that committee, has been really great to be able to model what those kind of community conversations look like. And all the looking at the data and trying to, Carl has been helping to share that as well, and looking at the data and really coming up with a way to be collaborative in our process moving forward, especially with training facilities, and knowing that we are at kind of a tipping point where we're going to use additional facilities to maintain what we currently have. So keep in mind that in mind.
Great, thank you for that. Stadium, we already have some amazing work planned as part of that initial information I shared. I know there was some consideration of, is there just a little more we could do to round out what that stadium package might look like, so we can talk about that. Robotics, although not part of the official survey, the survey did have, when the comments were analyzed, robotics came up as a topic, I think 45-plus times. Other facilities mentioned in the survey, there was mention of a fieldhouse, robotics, and some CTE space. There was also mention of just not wanting to lose sight of CTE. Any other comments or questions on these at this moment? All right, we'll keep moving.
Just quick clarity on the auditorium. You said 22 out of 44 events are overcapacity. Is that 22 nights or 22 events which could span multiple nights?
I'm going to look to Anna. I think some of them could be multiple-night events, like a play.
To answer your question for that, it's 22 separate events. Could span a multitude of nights for that.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Do I understand that one event could actually have three performances? So it's more than 22, actually?
More than 22 nights, or?
More than 22 times when we need more capacity.
That's correct, like for a play that could have three performances.
Okay, thank you.
I think the big statistic there is half, right? Forty-four, if we have 44 events, 22 of them were constrained, so.
Yeah, I mean, to put it in perspective, that's more nights than we utilize the stadium.
Right, yep.
Penny, since we could have people in the audience and were listening, could you please expand on what CTE is, so we're not following into these acronyms?
Yes, Career and Technical Education, and here in Midland Public, that includes welding, building trades, automotive technology, engineering, all of our business programs, all of our marketing programs, our healthcare tech programs. I'm sure I'm missing one, and then I'm going to be really mad that I missed one, but you get the gist. It's programs that prepare students both for college and careers. Okay, we're going to move into the dialogue section, and I imagine this is just going to evolve organically. I want to remind us, if you could move to the next slide, and I think we'll just leave this up here for a bit, that our outcomes for this evening are to reach consensus on these two. Before we do that, I just want to quickly say that there were other questions the board had, that we've shared information with you, and we populated those in the FAQ. We shared information about academic achievement questions, and I hope you saw that data set, that what we're seeing are gains across the district, and that what we think is a gap is actually closing. We talked about CTE. There were some questions about transportation, and we addressed those in the FAQ. I want to talk a little bit about planning toward the future. We had a question about Scenario A, and if we were to move forward with Scenario A, if in any way that precludes us from any future possibilities, that we're not boxing future boards and leadership in, and our analysis reveals no. Scenario A still gives us a multitude of opportunities to move forward, including if a future might still be components of what is Scenario B with a single community high school. There still is a pathway forward for that, that part of the construction, the design, rather, for the Northeast build can be such that it could be easily expanded if need be. I think I'll hold the others until we get into some dialogue. So I will just open it first if there are any clarifying questions, and then Phil, sort of turn it over to you and I to navigate this. I want you to know I will be doing my best to try to pull on threads where I see some commonality and asking questions like, I'm hearing this, can we all agree to this? And that's when I'm going to need you all to signal sort of where we're at. So I'm going to do my best to facilitate along with Phil, and here we go. What are you all thinking?
Can I ask a simple clarifying question?
Yes.
How many seats are in the current auditorium?
Seven fifty-six?
Okay.
Seven sixty-five, seven fifty-six. Brian, what is it?
Sure.
It's one of those numbers. Yeah.
Maybe I'll kick us off with things that I was thinking about before I walked in here. I carry a couple things around with me all the time, one of which is this 2023 assessment profile. This was shared in, I'm looking to Brian, February of this year? When did we do the assessment profile? The student data was shared in February of this year, and in that assessment report, MPS ranked top 4% or 5% in every academic success factor. One of the things that came out to me was we have become extremely successful with our students that have disabilities. That has put physical constraints on our buildings, because we have more students with disabilities in our classrooms than we ever probably imagined in 2015. We've also had great success building a pre-K program. I think we're up well over 60 students now, 80 students, 80 in four-year-old classrooms when we started six years ago with zero. And we've had extremely good success with arts, athletics, and play. When I look around at all of our extracurricular activities, whether it's band, drama, sports, robotics, every single one of those programs has had statewide success, not just regional success. And to some extent, we've created a problem for ourself in being successful. We've put these physical constraints on our buildings, and they're aging at the same time. Additionally, when we look at how many mills our residents have approved thus far, Mr. Vanna, he rightly points out, it's about a dollar a day for the median household in our district, and we're asking for an increase of another dollar. When we look at our comparison districts within the county, we're significantly lower than Meridian, significantly lower than Bullet Creek, and probably about the same as Coleman. When we look statewide, we're significantly lower than the median statewide. I think, yes, it is an increase, and it's an increase to do kind of three things in my mind. Some of, obviously, what Penny has covered is foundational. We have to address safety. Those are in both scenarios, but kind of what's beyond those foundational things, it's address elementary space, replace Northeast, which is what we talked about in 2015, and continue to expand pre-K. Those are the foundational things in my mind to address. People see it otherwise when you think about, kind of, on this list, obviously, there are things that will look and feel different as we go, if we go forward with a proposal and our community supports us. However, maybe the big items that look and feel different about our district, what are the foundational items I may have missed?
Question about the 2015 decision to not do anything with Northeast. What went into that decision, and why was that not acted upon? For anyone that has that context.
Yeah, this might be a team decision. So it was analysis of that building at that time. You know, the facility assessments really help you understand the condition of your buildings and whether they're worth continual investment. And at that time, it's my understanding that we were sort of put on notice that that building was nearing end, and so we did the minimal amount of work to keep it obviously safe and as appropriate as possible for student learning, and kept moving forward, knowing that this would be part of the plan. And I feel like Mike did a really nice job of planting that seed back then and being very open with people that Northeast would be on the docket for the next time around. Brian, is there anything you would add from a facility lens? Okay.
I have two questions. One is, what was our peak enrollment and when? Where did we max out?
I'm not sure.
Thirteen thousand, fourteen thousand? What was it?
Yeah, there's the document. I was, you're thinking of the same thing I am.
Okay. Okay. Second question, and this might go back to you, Brian, but about a year ago, we had some, we had parents from Dow High approach us about some needs in the athletic facilities at Dow High.
Yes, sir.
And we said, let's hit the pause button on that because we're going to do this facilities assessment. We don't know where we're going.
That's correct.
If we maintain two high schools, what, do we have any sense for the price tag to bring the facilities at Dow High up to parity with Midland?
Jen, I don't have an exact number for you.
Baseball, softball, yeah.
Yeah, but I remember, yeah, the challenges at that time are that you cannot renovate one without the other, and that's true for Title IX purposes across school lines as well, too.
Right.
So, yeah, while we have great folks that want to do great things, and they come to you and say, I really want to renovate, and let's just pick a baseball field at School A, you cannot just renovate the baseball field at School A without doing the softball field as well, too, and the same across town. And so that's why when those opportunities come forward, they're 1X and they need to be a 4X, depending on the facility. And so that brings challenges along with it. But we do know that at Dow High, the facility is back there to bring them up to par. That's included in Scenario A, and the details of those.
I think from December, and Daryl will know for sure, I want to say it was 23 million investment in Dow High.
Yep.
Including some of the interior athletic locker rooms. Does that sound approximately right?
The one cabinet would be bleachers. Somebody mentioned bleachers. The difference between the two would be the stadium has the full set of bleachers. Dow High currently does not.
Okay. But, I guess to put it in context, to maintain two, there's $23 million just to maintain parity between the two high schools, just in the athletic facility, never mind anything else.
But that also includes the investment at Midland High.
Right.
As part of both scenarios.
But does not include anything with her concessions, bleachers, restrooms?
Correct.
Okay.
Anne is doing some research for us back here, team. We're around 9,600 is looking like our peak in '03, '04. We're going to keep going back to look, but call yourself 9,600-ish.
What year was that?
'03, '04 is the documents we're looking at right now.
But if you go back, you can only go back as far as you can go back. But if you go back to when the baby boom peaked, like when did our district historically peak? What was the number?
There's probably some microfiche in a different office, and I'm going to go hit those for you for the forties, but.
Right.
The buildings that were built now, the buildings we're in now, which were built in the 60s, were built to accommodate a different number, a different.
Agreed.
Population than we have now.
Yes, sir.
I just want to know for comparison purposes what that is.
Well, importantly, they were also funded completely differently, too.
Correct.
That was pre-proposed A.
Right. Right, and we don't need that, I don't need it tonight. It's just something I want to know as we go forward.
Well, Phil, you mentioned something about, like graduating classes and the changing sizes from when we, when Midland High and Dow High were built. Like, their graduating classes were like around 500, correct? Maybe, maybe.
Yeah, my recollection is, so I'm raising the third generation of MPS student now. So my dad and his brothers were in the 70s, 500-ish, 550 from Midland High, but there was only three grades in a high school. I graduated with 400, just over 400, and I think we're at 280 in a grad- And I think we're at 280 in a graduating class now. So in three generations, you know, you've gone down 100 students each. But the, I think one of the important things that Penny noted earlier was in our enrollment projections, which are posted on the website as well, is we go out to 2034 in the enrollment projections, out 10 years, and we're showing zero to potentially a 3% increase. Call it flat for enrollment projections. And that's based on pretty comprehensive work that the statistician has done on economic trends, population growth, so on and so forth. But.
Any other clarifying questions? If not, let's sort of lean into.
No, I think I was going to say next where you're going is we can sit here and talk about data and share stories probably until tomorrow without taking a break. None of that obviates the results of the surveys, all of which are leaning pretty heavily in one direction. So not to short-circuit this, but I think maybe one approach we should look at is let's pick a direction and then build down from there. If we're looking at a hybrid of Proposal A, let's figure out if that's what we all agree on, and then let's start looking at what that looks like. Does it have options? Does it have any of the auxiliaries tied to that? And then we can just take Proposal B off the table. Or if we're leaning toward Proposal B, let's eliminate Proposal A and start drilling down, just in the interest of everybody's time.
Thanks for that, Scott. Yes, so I'm understanding that you feel it's important that we recognize the community feedback we've received, certainly leans toward A. I saw quite a few head nods around the room. So let's just check in on that. Is that somewhere where we're already at a point of consensus? Or do we need some more dialogue around really centering our discussion and our dialogue around A?
Well, I think some of the stuff that John just brought up in terms of the making sure we're all, we all have a common set of understanding around how much additional, I mean, I guess the cost really is. How much does it cost to keep both schools at the same level? We're talking about baseball and softball fields that came up. If you look at Dow High and you look at the baseball and softball fields, there is not adequate, aren't adequate concessions, restrooms, all that kind of stuff that had been talked about for years. I don't know, have you figured any of that yet?
It's all in there.
It's all it.
It's all in Scenario A.
It is. And I know that December 2023 presentation feels like a long time ago, and that was a bit of a whirlwind with 78 slides. But there were some slides in there to help us understand that specific work. Is there something in particular that you feel the need to know right now about that? Okay. It is. It absolutely is.
Just to, Darryl, are these still relatively accurate? So we had, John, to be specific about your question, we had, at that time, let me go back to the start of this. Arts, athletics, and play, we had 9.9 million for arts improvements if we did some of the enhancements on Central Auditorium, as well as band tower and storage improvements. We had 6.6 million in playground upgrades, which included upgrading playground equipment, providing ADA accessible features, adding new playground resurfacing, improving site drainage. The stadium, the Midland Community Stadium, was 6.6 million for restrooms, storage. That security entry feature that Penny talked about, and then renovating team rooms. Dow High in particular, what you were talking about, was 23 million inclusive of concession and storage building, the band tower, turf, baseball, and softball fields, and then additional parking. I think you were addressing some of that with kind of accessibility for, especially for families getting to the backfields.
Does that include land acquisition?
I don't think so.
Okay, yeah.
So we would have to look then at the state.
Well, you, there's adequate land that we currently own. Okay.
Midland High, to bring it up to the same level as Dow High, would be 12.8 million for turf, baseball, and softball, miscellaneous interior site improvements, which I think included the chiller for the gym that you talked about, and then locker room renovations. Middle school athletics was 3.3 million. And then that was it for the.
Yeah, pieces of that, yes.
Well, no, no, it's only on the, I think it's only the yellows. Yeah, because it doesn't include the CTEs.
I'll just offer, and Darryl can correct me. So that middle school slide is a good example. I think that represents work to happen at both middle schools if we're leaning towards Scenario A, making sure that it happens at both. Remember, initially in December, we were trying to paint a picture, and those numbers that you just mentioned, Phil, were trying to somewhat be agnostic of either scenario. So there's some inherent flexibility built in there is just what I want to mention. I know whenever we throw out numbers at a board meeting, I want to make sure that our community understands that those are estimates at this point until we get to that final program and the final list.
Yeah, so this, this presentation is on the facility planning as well? So the numbers that I just listed out start on page 37, and total 62 million.
I think it's a good clarification of why Scenario A actually ends up being more expensive to maintain the current number of buildings that we have and making sure that we're clear and transparent about that, that even though we're keeping things status quo, it actually costs more to do that, so.
It's a good point of clarification. So I want to come back to what I felt was a consensus emerging around alignment to the core components of Scenario A. Want to put that out there again and see where you all are.
I'll go. I'm there begrudgingly, and here's why. We don't have the exact number right now, but we know we are operating a district that was built for significantly more students than we have right now.
I think that's a fair statement.
Whether it's 9,600, 13,000, whatever it is. Our current enrollment of 7,400, well, actually, the birth rate, which is actually an even longer-term predictor, indicator of what enrollment is going to be, seems to have leveled off. So we don't, we think we're not going to continue to see the decline, but there's no evidence that we're going to see a big uptick either. We think it's going to remain flat. If you look at the birth rate, that suggests that enrollment will remain relatively flat. So we don't expect to be back at 13,000 or 9,600 in the foreseeable future. But we're maintaining more of everything than we need. We're maintaining two high schools. We're maintaining, we're going to be maintaining multiple baseball diamonds, softball fields, bleachers, all of those other things. You know, I've heard a lot of comments about the elementary school closings. That was 15 years ago. I mean, my son was in kindergarten. He's going to graduate from college in a month, you know? I mean, that was not yesterday. And with the lead time that it takes to go out to the public to get bonds approved and then start the construction process and the bidding process, that's not going to happen next year. These are, it takes a really long lead time to get these projects to fruition. So to say, well, we don't need it now, is very short-sighted. You know, Northeast, the decision in 2015, that's nine years ago. The decision to limp along with Northeast was nine years ago. And if we started today, Darryl, how long would it take? If we made the decision today to replace Northeast from a construction standpoint, is it two years?
I think we've been telling people three at best.
Not including the time to get to the public to vote for the bonds, just construction.
Yeah, if the bond was approved today, it would take you three and a half to four years, including design, to get to that point, to where you're opening a middle school.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think when we look at the estimated remaining life of Midland High and then Plymouth, we're going to be back having this conversation in the next 10 years. I don't, I don't see it, I don't see any way around it. But we asked for the feedback. The feedback we got is, I think, overwhelming, it's fair to say overwhelmingly, Scenario A. We also have to keep in mind, there's a lot of feedback we didn't get. And that's, look, I mean, that's on, you know, for all the people that complain about, you know, you guys aren't being forward-thinking, you're not, well, we didn't, those people didn't respond to the survey. We got the information that we asked for, even though it was what appears to be a very small statistical sample of the community. Every single household in the district get that postcard?
That is correct. We, we wanted to make sure that our entire community knew the work that was happening. We sent a postcard with a link and a QR code to the survey, asking people to complete it. Midland Daily News had a couple of stories in there as well. We use social media, as well as our own district newsletters. I'm not sure what more we could have done to promote that survey.
And we got the sample that we got?
Correct.
Okay. I don't, I don't know how we can ask for the information, receive the information, and then not act upon the information that we have, even though, you know, we're fairly certain that there's a large segment of the community that would actually want us to be forward-thinking and get out in front of the issues that we, we know we're going to end up spending more money. I don't see any way around it. I mean, we're going to spend an extra 30 million bucks just to keep the status quo because we don't want change.
Well, one thing that I, not to interrupt you, one thing that I don't know is that we've included in this feedback, where we've heard from the business groups that we went and saw and shared with them the different plans. And overwhelmingly, in the four or five groups that I was a part of, they said, you know what, you guys should swing for the fences, go for Scenario B. Do something different.
If you have a.
And really be forward-thinking. That's like other districts across the state.
And if you have a, an employer in our area that's about to undertake a major construction project and bring in and increase a significant number, add a significant number of employees, we're competing with Thomas Township, Saginaw Township, Freeland? Should we, you know, does our community benefit if we provide the infrastructure in the form of schools to accommodate the children of those incoming employees? I think the answer is yes. But again.
Employers said, this is what we need to bring world-class talent to our organizations. And we can't discount that either. But to be fair, it's not listed quantitatively in the survey that we hold back, so.
So I guess I'll just, I'll conclude my remarks with, I am begrudgingly acknowledging that A is, the feedback we've gotten is that the people who responded strongly favor Scenario A. I hope that the, it should not go without saying that the public needs to be prepared to spend a lot more money to keep things the way they are. We could have better facilities for our students, for our staff, and for our community, and spend less money, and yet, we're choosing not to. And to me, that makes absolutely no sense at all. But that's the information, that's the feedback we've gotten. So when people come to public comment in four years and say, oh, my gosh, we got to do this, we got to do this, we got to do this, they need to be prepared for the answer to be, I'm sorry, we don't have the money because we did this. But that's, I, that's, I don't think that's on us. I think that's on the community for not giving us the feedback that we needed to take a much further, longer-term view rather than the short-sighted duct tape and bubble gum approach that we're about to take.
Thanks, John, I think, oh, please go ahead.
I was going to say, one of the ways that I'm consoling.
Duct tape and shoe glue, I'm sorry.
It's going to be a little bit more than that for 30 million dollars. But, but I think the idea that, how I'm wrapping my head around it is that we need to make the improvements across the board. Like, we're going to need to make them in a liminal space, and whatever we're moving towards, whether it's 10, 15, 30 years from now, we're going to need a new elementary school. And, and we're going to need some kind of new middle school building facility of sorts. And we will have one that is state-of-the-art, that can be expanded on if we need to, to move in whatever direction we need to move in 10 years, which will hopefully make us sort of agile in that regards. And whatever middle school we end up with is going to have great facilities for athletics. So I think, like, however we end up, I mean, if the community is saying they need us to spend that money now, I think we also need to console ourselves with the idea that eventually it's going to get used by students, whether they're ninth through 12th graders or not, or maybe they are, and we don't know. But, but that we do need a new elementary school, and we do need another middle school facility in four years, so.
Thanks, Jen. I think Ann wants to jump in here, or are you just keeping your finger on your mic? Okay, okay. Anyone else? Brad, any comments before I ask again if we're at a point of consensus?
Sure. I did want to thank Joe, Jessica, Emily, Jennifer, Melissa, and Mary for standing up and talking and your questions. And we've been fielding questions a lot, and there's a lot of tough answers. This group up here, we can't change the past on the schools that were closed and/or torn down. Wasn't during our tenure. But at the same time, you have to think back to that point in time. Our district was in terrible financial shape. We had to do what we had to do to get through it, to be able to stay afloat and to offer the products that middle and public school is known for. So it's done, it's over with, those schools are gone, we're here today. So FFO, John, myself.
John was there for the bulk of it and Scott.
Yep.
And Scott, and we've been looking at this for two years now. And it really starts out, like I said in our last meeting, this all started from the littles. We have universal programs coming from the state of Michigan that we have to be prepared for in full rollout by 2027, which we don't have the space for. So you start with that, and then you start looking at, okay, yes, we're already overcapacity in a couple of elementaries, and we need more room and more space for these kids. So we have Scenario A, which stays very traditional with middle and public, how it's always been, which to John's note, I believe that that number was 15,000 students, and now we are down to 7,500 students. Scenario B was a very different way to look at this, but it also was created for the littles because we have to be ready for this pre-K additional students coming into our district. And we want to have that offering in the neighborhood elementary schools. So whether you go A or B was all done for the pre-K through four, or pre-K through five. That's why we're sitting here today. That's why we've gone through and studied all these things, spent all this money, looked at all these different options. Now, from a business perspective, logic and/or some of the businesses that we have gone to go talk to, they do favor the B model, because it is a super-high school that would have, be designed for today's learner with lots of different options, similar to some of the super-high schools that are across the state of Michigan right now. Actually, even when we combine Midland and Dow, we'd be smaller than some of the schools we're competing against today. So, but it appears through the data that, you know, the emotional side came through of, we're not ready for that yet. So, 430-some pages of comments that we were given?
Yeah.
I read, I think, 436 pages of comments, and there are solid feedback from all angles. But we have to make a decision, because whether we do Scenario A or Scenario B, we are gonna enhance Midland Public Schools, because we have schools that are really old, and we haven't done enough to keep up, keep them up. So now, if we have this three, four, five-year window before we even open the front door, we gotta go. So, neither one is a loss for the children.
That's a great point.
We just aren't ready, as a community, to let go of the two schools and the rivalry. Plain and simple?
It is, but what I'm hearing is that this is too expensive, and we're leaning towards Scenario A, which is the, the more expensive option.
Correct.
Which is what I'm having trouble getting my arms around. And I, I wonder, and I think it might benefit the community to know, again, let's see, Phil said what the, our comparable millages were for our neighboring districts, in addition to our elite comparison group. We're significantly low, we are, we're significantly lower than our elite comparison group, and also schools in the area. So I think it would help the community to understand exactly what that difference is in Midland Public Schools going forward, because that's really who we're competing against, whether from an academic standpoint, athletic standpoint, facilities, arts, entertainment, and play. So, that's what I'm having trouble getting my arms around. Thank you very much.
This is from the December presentation. I want to acknowledge that some of these could have changed. And I don't have the slide for locals, but you mentioned it before, two of our county districts are at seven. Coleman, congratulations to them, passed a small bond campaign in the most recent election.
So I'm seeing the data, which is saying, we wanna go with Scenario A, which is, which is a lot more expensive, but I'm hearing people say, well, it's too expensive. So, that's where I'm having trouble.
Is there a fear factor that was kinda created by this survey? In that, if we don't go with A, which is what the data, limited amount of data that we have says, that we are afraid this bond won't pass, and will devastate the general fund, because all of the work that has to be done, has to be paid for. And if we don't have, like you've said throughout this meeting, this bond provides relief that our general fund will need to achieve those ends, and if we don't have a successful bond, you know, that money comes out of the classroom, sadly, to pay for a roof, to pay for a parking lot, to pay for a boiler.
And our facilities just continue to age without a solution.
Yes.
So I'm hearing from you all that we care a great deal about what our community has offered us as input, but also care a great deal about what our future could hold. And I think we have enough information to say that Scenario A doesn't preclude us from all these future possibilities. It, it seems to me that's where you all generally want to head. I think there is an opportunity for us, through strategic planning, after, you know, we make a, you all make a decision about what's next and most immediate, for us to think about how we inform ourselves, get additional data, and move our district toward that vision, with lots of additional community feedback, lots of informational sessions, and set us up for that, for that next phase. So I want to acknowledge that a decision now doesn't mean we can't ever be what you all are describing. It just comes with the price tag and some of the other pieces that you mentioned.
Well, I think, I think Brad said it extremely well. We launched this endeavor to address three issues. Elementary space and pre-K for our littles, and a building that has to be replaced in Northeast. And Scenario A does that. It strongly listens to the feedback that our community has given us, and I think it creates a sustainable fleet that we can grow from. As you said, I think strategic planning is one of those things that we need to continue to be open and honest about, and realize that districts, particularly MPS, is something that needs to change as an evolution, not a revolution. And I think the community feedback has been that Scenario B is probably too much of a revolution at this point in time. You know, I think one of the things that I specifically asked Kelsey twice last month was, can we interpret from this data that 75% of our survey respondents are saying, yes, we understand you need to spend money on the district? She said, yes, twice, when I asked that question. So I think our community understands the need, they're telling us not, not now. And I think the other thing, too, is that when you, when you think about the increase in the millage rate, potentially, the bulk of the funding is spent on those two priorities of building the new elementary school and replacing Northeast, which addresses, as Brad talked about, our littles. And I, I can appreciate John and John's point about, you know, what are we gonna spend? I think, in my mind, I can separate a little bit the outside facilities from the inside facilities, when you think about our high schools, in that, insofar as things like a baseball field or a softball field can last past the useful life of a building. So when I think about what money that we spend now on a two-high-school scenario could potentially be, may, may potentially only have a 10-year life, or 20-year life, it would be fairly limited in scope, I believe, and Darrell can help us with these, but Midland and Dow combined would be about 16 million, and then it'd be, you know, what portions of those could be saved if you ever did replace one of those two buildings or combine in the future? So I think, from a sustainability aspect, we're trying to really make sure that we're only spending a very limited amount of the taxpayer money on the assets that may change in the future, and the bulk of the funding is spent on those two key priorities that we set out with two years ago, which is elementary space combined with pre-K, and then replacing an Northeast.
Assuming we are leaning toward the first proposal, can we see that slide again with our peer districts, where they are with their millages?
I got you. And again, I just want to acknowledge, these were as of December of '23. From that presentation, they could be slightly different, likely higher for some, not lower.
So that puts us roughly in the top quartile?
If we're at six, you mean?
Yeah.
It's, yeah, right above Ann Arbor.
So it's not, it's not out of line with what our-
Right, I would say in comparison to this, if we have concerns about that dollar value of the total package, I think there are ways tonight, through conversation, that we can understand what that next layer of your priorities are, and we can go back and take a look at some of those other components, and turn the dial on those as needed.
And one other thing that I think we should acknowledge, that this rate, whatever this new rate, wherever it lands, sets us up for the future. We're going to have a higher influx of dollars because of our increased millage rate moving forward, that will allow the district to continue to maintain and to save and to build and to plan for the future of our kids. So, having a higher rate is necessary, in my mind, for a lot of reasons.
Specifically because of the relief on the general fund?
Absolutely.
So I'm gonna bring us back, Ann, did, I feel like I'm calling you out, I don't mean to do that, I just am watching you out of the corner of my eye, I don't wanna miss an opportunity for you to jump in if you want.
Well, I will say that I think I'm in a similar position as John Lotterbach. I, I heard the community, I read hundreds of pages of comments. I will say that I found a number of the comments to be, I don't know if anecdotal is the right word, but, you know, the Midland-Dow rivalry, I understand is important, I didn't go to, excuse me, Midland or Dow, but I did go to school in a town that had a very fierce rivalry, and certainly I would have feelings if, you know, my school closed. However, I think that we have to look forward, and I think that comments regarding the rivalry are looking present and past, and not envisioning what our future could look like, and how we could really make the greatest facilities for all of our students, not just one new elementary and one new middle-school, and I understand that there will be upgrades to all the schools. The other thing that really struck me was the number of comments about the cost, but a lot of the comments seemed to compare A to B, and they seemed to be saying that B costs too much, but yet A costs more. And then to kind of talk about something that's already been spoken about here, but under A, we're gonna maintain nine, what I'm gonna call, old buildings, and we're gonna spend the money to upgrade and maintain those. Under B, we're going to maintain eight, so we're gonna maintain fewer old schools, which means we're gonna have lower costs of maintenance, with a brand-new school that will, I assume will have limited funds, you know, obviously some maintenance required, but will just cost less generally. So I'm grudgingly going to discuss A, but I think, I think that A is a tiny bit short-sighted compared to B.
Thanks for those comments. So in light of all that discussion, I wanna check in again about our consensus around A. All of the concerns duly noted, understanding what our future, future might hold, but for this moment in time, should we dig deeper into A and the components of A, setting aside Scenario B? Are we at consensus with that?
Yes, for me.
Brad and Jen, are you comfortable moving forward focused on Scenario A?
I, so, I'm actually honestly less certain now than I was at the beginning of this conversation, to be honest. And, and I'm just gonna put that out there, because if, so many of us, like, like I get, I get the survey data, and I also hear the people saying, say, cost, and we need a new elementary school, we need new buildings, and we need them now, we need to be on a ballot soon, but I think, I'm not sure that we're necessarily ready to go for the same thing, and that feels weird to me, cuz I didn't necessarily feel that way walking in. So, I'm sorry, but I'm gonna be real about it, because, because I wanna make sure that we're doing the best thing for our students now, and our students in the future, and our community.
So we had sort of consensus on this side, Brad?
Grudging consensus.
Yes, duly noted, but-
I think the question is, how do you weigh being a good steward of the money we are, may receive from the community versus listening to the feedback of the community, right? Like, we wanna do, ooh, sorry, we wanna do both, but they're very contradictory right now.
We did ask. I'll also offer, you know, Jen, your comment about needs.
Yeah.
And John's inquiry about the timeline to Darrell, those are very real.
Yeah.
We mentioned the littles being a priority, and I just wanna remind us, in addition to the preschool and the utilization, we will continue to have requests from the ESA for space. It's important to us that we provide those opportunities for students to come, interact, and be in a school with their typical peers, that's part of what we believe in for inclusion.
Penny, could you explain that, so they understand what you are talking about?
Yes, so we host programs through the Midland County ESA, special education programs that are in our facilities. The ESA coordinates those, the ESA staff, their teachers and paraprofessionals are in those classrooms in our buildings. The ESA has shared with us that their data show increased demand for those special education programs that, that they run in our buildings. And each year, I'm looking over here to the team, two or three classroom requests, this is why we have, and I don't mean for it to sound that way, there's lots of factors for why we have our electives on a cart, but that is one, because we're faced with the decision of, okay, we can't say no to the ESA. We believe those students, there are students collectively, and we wanna create space for them, to be, again, in an elementary with their typical peers, feeling very included and that they belong, and having the best educational experience they can. So I don't want us to lose sight that that is part of our need as well, and coupled with all these other things we talked about. And, please know, this isn't a pressure point for me, I'm simply trying to, to lift us up to what are our key priorities right now, and what is our sense of urgency to have those key priorities met?
Both address a key priority. Right, A and B.
They do, and so the piece I wanna layer into that is a yes vote at the ballot, and I think we need to grapple with that, based on the survey feedback we've received, and the feedback you all have received from constituents across our community. If we have these needs, and they're real, and they're urgent, what is going to get us a positive vote and support from our community?
Yeah, and when, the, the reason I carry this around with me every day is, the most important thing we do is educate our students. Nothing else matters except for academic success. And, part of that academic success is making sure that our students feel safe in our buildings, feel welcome in our buildings, have an educational environment that is conducive for our staff to teach them every day. And, I think, when we look at the totality of the feedback, I appreciate the input of our businesses, thinking about talent attraction to our community, but frankly, the citizens that we have now matter way more as a district. And, we can grow our own, and we can grow the talent that every business needs. MPS has done that for a long time, there's a reason that there's four MPS graduates sitting up here today, because we've figured out how to grow our own. That is through, as Penny talked about earlier, a number of different vocational pathways, whether you wanna go in the military, you wanna go in skilled trades, you wanna go to post-secondary education, or you wanna enter the workforce- education, or you want to enter the workforce straight out of high school, MPS is the place for you. When I think about the assessment profile, the one thing that we talked about in February and we have addressed continually is we are a progressive growth district, and we need to address some key learning deficiencies comparative to how good we are at the middle school and high school level in our elementary. Again, to Penny's feedback and where she's trying to go, the most important thing for us to focus on is the littles. Both scenarios do, but I think scenario A is first and foremost, listening to our community, does no harm to a future scenario B if the community ever decided to do that in the future, and can collaboratively work to address kind of the sustainable goals for our district long-term. As Ann pointed out, we do have to be a fiduciary to the taxpayer, and we are, but I think our taxpayers are telling us, go with scenario A. I'm not going to tell them no. That's where I'm at.
Jen, knowing that you were still grappling with this, how do you process that in alignment with scenario A?
I'm begrudgingly ready to go for A. I mean, like, that's, that's where I think we're all are.
Brad?
I don't want to use that word. I don't think that that's right at all, my personal opinion. If we are going out and we're going to invest $200 million into our students and into middle and public schools and into our children, I'm not begrudgingly about anything.
You're right. Thank you, Brad.
But what the public does need to understand, that we have the ripple effect of two of everything.
Sure.
Which sometimes turns into four of everything. That, in the long term, is not sustainable if we have a couple tick downs in our total overall student count. So I would just want to say, we asked, you told us, scenario A is where we are at today, November 11th, 2024. Start moving in that direction. I think that's what we need to do. But we, as the Board of Education, are saying, back to the public. We may be back talking about this or planning for this as soon as four or five years from now, once we get, even maybe even before we get these things shovel-ready. I don't think we should ever lose this momentum of all this information that we've gathered, gathered, and we see that in the long term, a community high school. So maybe that's more forward-thinking that we have to have, prepare more, offer more into the public, and we aren't asking so much at that point in time, is that we are working together to get to that, because that's what we can afford, to still provide the best programming that we can afford. And the programming comes from dollars. So I think that I'm happy to move forward with A. I think it's a great thing. I think it's an awesome thing for our district. I will support it, and I will be very, very confident in that, but I just want the public to know that four, five, six, seven years from now, we're going to be really talking about scenario B and going in that direction. We still have aging facilities across the district. They are, they're old, and we have to be great stewards of the money that the public is willing to invest in our district. But at the same time, this is, this is not a one-time ask. We're coming, we're coming back in the future, and we're going to work together, and we probably will be working in that direction. But it's not today.
Thanks for reminding us of what I said at the beginning. These are both really exceptional opportunities for us. So I appreciate your enthusiasm, and I see others sort of leaning into that, too. So I'm taking that, that we are at consensus, that A is where we want to dig in. So why don't we start then with A itself? And Sarah, maybe you can help me. We'll just go back to the visual. I got it, actually. My clicker's working. Let's just take a look at this. So A, as it stands, a new elementary with preschool programming distributed across those elementaries, and we're building a new middle school. As we look more closely at that, I want to remind us of the infrastructure pieces that we talked about on the critical needs slide. Was there anything overwhelmingly there that you took exception to, that you need more information about, or do we have consensus of moving forward with the additional layer of detailed planning? And I'll remind you again that what we're looking for is consensus, consensus overwhelmingly, not the, the, you know, which restrooms we're going to renovate. Were there things you heard tonight that are of concern to you?
Nothing tonight, but throughout this process, there's been discussion about need for additional robotics capacity.
Yes.
And B would have allowed us or given us an option to look at using Jefferson for that purpose. A doesn't. I think somewhere off to the side over here, we need to continue the conversation about capacity for additional, I mean, we're a great problem to handle. So many kids that want to participate in robotics that we're running out of space.
Let's come back to that in just a moment, if you will. I think that's important to talk about along with those other additional facilities. So if we think about these buckets, and I'm kind of anchoring back to what we know will be a bond application and the kind of components that we need to, to complete in that application, I'm going to lean on Dale and Daryl for some clarity if need be. So the overarching infrastructure that we discussed, the remodeling and renovations at Jefferson to make it similar, as similar as possible, to the new middle school build, the renovations that will happen at our two high schools with the classrooms, CTE spaces, are we, are we in consensus about those overwhelmingly?
Yeah.
Buses, technology, and furniture, do we need to dialogue about that more? Are there any concerns about those components?
I think at a previous meeting, I asked if any of the buses were going to be hybrid or electric, and I think that is something that we should think about, because those could be cost-saving in the future for us. I don't know how much that would increase the price tag of this purchase, though.
Okay, we can look into that. Does, oh, does anyone need a water well fills up? Okay. I don't know if anybody on the team has particular comments about the buses. I feel like we started to look into that. There are some concerns for us.
There will be some electrical infrastructure that we have to put in place for that, that we could develop some cost models for, if that was something that you're interested in.
I was just reading about some grant opportunities for that kind of solar infrastructure for electric buses and things like that, that kind of pays for itself. And so that would be a cool thing to add into that piece or evaluate if that's an option.
And I know, you know, a few of the comments that I read mentioned sustainability, and certainly we've had our Dow High and I believe Midland High folks.
Yeah.
Kids come and talk to us about sustainability. So I think this is something that we should certainly consider for their future as well as the future of MPS.
Thanks. I have notes of that.
Penny, I did make a note to myself as you were going through, we have an amazing grant team.
Yeah, we do.
Within, within Brian's or, oh, Anna's organization.
Now Anna's, yeah.
Anna's organization.
And Ken, it's kind of a joint effort between business and curriculum.
I assume that they will look for potential grants where available as they work through the, if, if we're approved for a bond, would, would, how do I want to say, ask this question? If the grant team identifies certain federal funding help, for example, like ADA improvements or other cost shares, do those then come back to the district as a bond savings that we could then complete more projects, or how would that?
Yeah, I would assume, but I, I don't know all the detailed logistics of that.
Okay.
Yes, and we'll, we'll make sure our grant team is, is well aware of what we're, what we're doing here.
Penny, I wanted to have one clarification. Absolutely, we would be investing in Jefferson.
Yes.
That is definitely true, but I don't want you to make it sound like it would be equal.
It would not be equal.
Because Central Park cannot, we invested in all of our elementary schools across the district, but they don't compare in what it looks like or anything related to Central Park Elementary.
Thank you. It's a good point.
We have a 1950s, all their six buildings are 1950s or whatever, and yes, we would be happy to invest in Jefferson, but I would, I don't want to use the word "equal."
Thank you. That is true. Furniture, similar.
Absolutely.
Classroom technology, similar.
Yes.
I believe flooring, things of that nature, classroom upgrades as a general rule.
Can you talk a little bit about the co-branding, putting that on the educational stage?
Yeah. Dale, are you with us?
I am here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Talk to us about Jefferson.
Okay. I am actually pretty excited about the Jefferson assignment. I've studied the building just on a very preliminary level, but I think the footprint actually lends itself to quite an adaptable design, where I agree that we wouldn't be, you know, equal to the new middle school, but I think we can really transform that building into something that is, I'll put it this, I'll put it this way, equally unique and equally good for students. It might not be the same, but I do believe that we can transform that building with what I'm looking at and what, what I'm visualizing and knowing that with a proper allocation of funds to that, that particular building, that we will come away with something that's equally exciting to the, to the, to the district, if that helps, you know, put it in a different, different type of equality, but I, I think, I think the potential is there.
Thank you so much. Any follow-up questions to that, anyone, on the Jefferson front? So I'm hearing consensus around those renovations. We also talked about classroom renovations at the high schools. Are there any specifics there that you feel the need to dig in to a little bit further before we really move on?
Can we possibly address, because it came up in comments a few times, the Dow boilers?
Yeah, yeah, we actually, Brian, how much have we spent? We just.
Spent a lot.
All new boilers there, 800?
Actually, we're doing the pipe wrapping today, and that's the final step of the project.
Yeah.
So we are almost done.
Yes. Thank you. Yeah.
Welcome.
Honestly, I think we had hoped to wait maybe for, for the bond for that one, but there was a need to move forward more quickly. Okay, so I'm just going to take us back then to avert your eyes if you, if you get motion sick. I want to take us back to our outcomes. So I just want to pause, though, because we should have just acknowledged this. I'm sensing we are all in alignment with moving forward toward May. So consensus about May, a May proposal, consensus about the key components of scenario A, consensus about the general infrastructure package and putting some finer detail to that for you to consider next Monday at the board meeting, consensus about what has been shared for the remodeling slash renovations across the district. I believe I heard consensus about the bus technology and furniture items. I'm going to look for you all to tell me if what I'm saying is not true or if anyone isn't in alignment here. So then, let's dig into the additional projects. And John, I want to come back.
Sorry, and before we go to the, are you going to go to the elementary? And so we talked about Northeast. I just had one quick question on elementary before you jump into auxiliary.
Yeah.
In the December '23 proposal, I think we pegged that we would build a new elementary at like 450 capacity was kind of our target.
Correct.
And, and then it, what that does in particular, and, and this, I think, addresses some of Emily's questions, is it, it relieves some of our capacity issues that we have in particular Adams, Seibert, and Woodcrest. So those building utilizations fall, in the case of Adams and Seibert, to 76%, and Woodcrest to about 80%, whereas Woodcrest is about 98% today. The, is there, when we think about 450, is there a reason we, I understand we picked 450 because we thought, okay, that, that's about the relief that we need, but do you think about potentially overbuilding a little bit to make sure that you have capacity for future growth if the town grows that way, or how do you?
So there are some limitations, as I've come to learn, about what can be approved in a bond application.
Okay.
You have to share current enrollment and what your projected enrollments are for that facility. So could we edge up a little in that build? Likely, but we would need to build within what we anticipate the most immediate capacity to be.
Got it. Okay.
And Dale and Daryl, chime in if I'm offering inaccurate information there.
I would say that's correct, and I think with the cost models we're showing here, there is some flexibility. Within that 450 number, make sure that when we finalize the bond application, the information that if it requires, you know, additional classrooms, that would be included in that number.
Got it. Okay.
Just to be clear, I mean, the utilization rate that I've seen for, say, Woodcrest is 101%. We are way up there, and then Seibert was 97.
Yeah.
So we're even higher, Phil, than, than, you know, what you had indicated.
Those are from December '23.
Right.
And what I believe you're looking at are more recent numbers. Yes, because the, it's, it's been worse since December '23. I also just want to acknowledge, I think it's important for us to make sure we keep in mind that scenario A does include those boundary adjustments, and so the ultimate enrollment and utilization rates for each of those elementaries will be slightly varied from what our projections are, depending on enrollments at that time and how we choose to adjust those school enrollment boundaries.
And, and for clarification, those post-move utilization numbers are inclusive of putting four-year-old or pre-K in the building?
Correct.
So I know that question came up a couple times in the survey responses of like, not really.
Does the math work?
Does the math work?
Yes, the math works. And we've looked at it, I think Brian and I have looked at this at least a half dozen times. Anna's been part of that, too, as, as our team, just to ensure that what we are predicting is accurate.
Yep.
Projecting, rather, not predicting.
Yeah. Thank you.
Do you, do you have the, like, numbers, the enrollment numbers, like, what our sizes are nor, like, right in front of you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I was just trying to pull them up to, was going to look at them, but just like, is 450 our average, or, I mean, I know we have one that's way above that right now, but like.
Adams is for enrollment.
Right.
Adams is for 80.
Central Park is 654. Chesmet Hill is 430.
Plymouth is 422.
Seibert is 656, and Woodcrest is 605.
So if, if some of our, I mean, and those are, those numbers are actually high, but if those are the numbers of our existing buildings, it almost makes sense, like Phil's asking, that that new school be larger in capacity in case one of those other schools goes offline, right? You know what I mean? Like, when we're, if we don't have enough room, like, if we're thinking for future growth.
Okay, so how about here back in consensus mode? Are you all comfortable with us exploring what that upper range could be for new construction?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I didn't mean to derail.
No, I think it's important, I think it's important, John?
No.
No, I, yeah, I heard what you're saying.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
We are, but, but I do think that is an important point.
That's a.
If you all want the new construction to. If you all want the new construction to have a little more capacity, then we need to explore that.
I would be comfortable saying that the 277 will address the capacity larger than 450. However, when the program is finalized, it will match restrictions that Treasury places upon us with the size of the facility.
Okay.
But there is, there is room for growth within the number that you guys have seen tonight.
Great.
So I would say that you should feel comfortable that the building's going to be built with appropriate size and have a little additional capacity when it's done.
Thank you. I think as a point of order, before we talk about these ancillary facilities, let's go back to this slide. So I want to remind us where we are just in overall cost when we're looking at Scenario A, at 277 approximately with a 3.25 millage increase. I'd like you to keep that in mind as we talk about the additional facilities and projects that we might include. I think it's important that we consider that price point and the conversation you had earlier tonight about the community's interest in supporting the schools, but where that cap might be. So let's go back to the slide with, I just totally cruised past it. And maybe let's start with robotics, John, since you took us there. Might you just offer your insights about robotics?
Yeah, I mean, when did we sign the lease? Last year, how many?
I don't remember offhand.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
It's more than they had. Yes.
Yeah, you're north of 200,000 a year, sir.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
We have real estate. We've vacant lots.
Yes.
We're already at capacity in the space, we're paying 15 grand a month.
Also true.
And again, good problem to have, we've got a lot of kids. So I think in our discussions, we need to be looking either at acquiring an existing structure or what, I mean, do we need more than a pole building with a lot of juice? I don't know, I mean, I don't know what, we need a big open space, and we need electricity. So. If we had an existing building we could use for that purpose, that would be great. We're not going to, but I think we need to explore what other possibilities there are.
I think the beauty in us building our own facility is that we could tailor it so that it would meet the needs of the littles as well as the big kids who are doing robotics, because I think robotics is so important and something that all of our kids should have the opportunity to be exposed to. And not, not to kind of make jest of robotics, but we did talk about, well, what do we need? You know, you need a big open space, it's not that complicated besides getting all the plugs and electricity in there. So maybe we could keep the cost to a minimum, but really maximize the opportunities for our kids. Is that something that we need to put in the bond? Or is that something, if we keep that on that lower end of three to five million, that we could use general funds for?
I think that's true. I also, so yes, I also just want to acknowledge, I appreciate the minimalist perspective. I think that it might be wise in this situation. I'll just remind us that when students are inhabiting a building, for whatever reason, there are certainly codes and things that we would need to ensure. So I just want to make sure we're not communicating to the community that, you know, we're putting together a pole barn for students. But something that looks, something that looks appropriate for the space in alignment with what our community would expect, I do think it's reasonable. And I know there's been some conversation at FFO and in other study committees to continue exploring other potential current vacant facilities in our community that we could procure.
We would have to work with the teams, but to, I think it was, I think it was Phil's point, I'm losing track here. This is an excellent ideal opportunity to unleash your grants team.
Yeah.
On something, I know that Anna has previous experience with this, and you hired the best of the best in the region on that. And I bet you that there is definite partners out there that would help us in procurement, funding, all of those things along this venture. So I think that this is an ideal public-private partnership as well.
Am I, am I hearing some? Okay, am I hearing, am I hearing consensus that robotics, we do need a solution? We care about it, we care about those students, but that it's not what we want to put in this bond proposal? Is there any concern about that as a point of consensus? Okay, I want to pause, it's 9:16. We have a few other items to get through. I'm not certain we'll make that by 9:30, although we'll be efficient.
I think we should see where we're at at 9:29.
Great, I'm happy with that too. All right, so let's talk pool.
I'm not, I'm not comfortable taking it off the bond. I don't think that's the right thing to do, take 100% of that, of the.
Are you on robotics?
On robotics.
Okay.
But you are comfortable.
We're, we need to study it further. That, that's not enough of an answer for me. 3.8 million to 4.2 million is too big of a window.
I think the 3.8 represented renovations potentially to an existing facility, and 14.2 represented new construction of something really fabulous.
Yeah, so I'm not, I'm not really interested in building a standalone facility.
Okay.
But I think we should have some dollars in this bond to address our robotics needs. Now, is that going to solve all of their needs? No, probably not, but if you were to pick a number and you say, okay, we're going to have $4 million in for robotics, I would like that as part of this bond.
Is there, is there a way to do that in a bond? Or is it have to be like new construction or remodel or property acquisition?
We could buy a budget to renovate spaces if you already had for robotics, and that would be allowable. And you could identify FFNE, like, equipment potentially that the program might need, you can do that as well.
Will you tell them what FFNE stands for?
Furniture and equipment, so you could identify some equipment for robotics, maybe there's a budget for that, but you go the alternate route through grant funding to create the facility. Would be one way, or identifying some space within the district and allocating a budget for renovations to existing space, that would be allowable as well.
But could we leave our options open to build or to renovate, or do we have to pick one?
The one area that you do have to be specific on is new construction.
Okay.
And if you say we are going to build this building, that is, that is something that would be in the ballot language. So that would be an area that you have to be specific on.
Thanks for that clarification.
Brad, are you okay with, I think maybe the consensus was, yes, it's important to the board, and it has to be, we have to have a solution.
Mm-hmm.
And, trying to remember all of the, Penny might have to help me out with what the consensus was, but maybe.
I think the consensus was, we care, it's important, we need a solution, and that we would seek that outside of the bond, and then we're coming back to having it be part of the bond. So I wonder, the renovation of existing space, just to talk this through, we don't have existing space to renovate. Earmarking money to renovate space could include us purchasing a facility in our community, which would then be our property, and using that money to renovate that space to meet our needs.
That's where I'm at.
Okay. Does anybody have an issue with that?
I actually would feel more comfortable if it wasn't part of the bond and that we were using grant funding and either in smaller amounts of general funds. I think taking that 277 and bumping it up even 4 million sounds like a lot to me. Like, that's a bigger ask, but that's just where I'm at. I mean, when we're already paying what we're paying for a lease and we're using that in the money that we have to acquire a facility and then do some grant funding to get, I mean, I feel like we could do that without putting it out there in this debt.
So I'm going to go out on a limb here, and I'm going to need you to tell me if I'm off-base. That 277 was the best estimate for Scenario A based on the information we had in December. There are some variables in there now that we've landed squarely with Scenario A. One possible path forward could be for you to charge me to go back and work with the team and explore if there is any room within that 277 for part of it to be in support of facility renovations for robotics and come back to you with a recommendation about whether that's possible and to understand what we might sacrifice from the bigger package for that.
I, I would prefer that we take the approach that Brad suggested and lay out what our priorities for the district are, see what that price tag is, and then if we need to rationalize things, then we take that next layer. I, I'm really nervous about rationalizing a budget that we don't.
No.
Fully, that's two-year-old right now.
Yep.
That's where I'm at.
Okay. So I'm, I want to be clear about what I, I think I'm hearing. I'm hearing move forward and see what this would look like as part of the bond for renovation money, not new construction money.
Inclusive of property acquisition, potentially.
Okay.
But I think we're also asking for a fairly substantial breakdown so we can see the different pieces and how they fit together within the overall cost.
Got it, thank you. Are we ready to move to pool?
Before we skip over, are you skipping stadium?
Yeah, I was just skipping to the ones where I felt like maybe we had some.
Just for clarification to the community, though, I think the consensus on the stadium is.
Oh yeah, let's, let's talk about that, we were going to come back to it, so please, go ahead. Let's, no, let's talk stadium.
Okay, stadium, sorry, I thought you were, I'm sorry if I screwed you up.
No, you're great, please proceed.
So within the proposal A for the December stuff, and look to Daryl if it's still accurate, we, we had contemplated renovating the existing community stadium, which would include the upgrades to the bathroom facilities and the secure entrance.
Team rooms.
Concession, storage, team rooms.
Yes, I think that was 6.6.
6.6 million in here, is that general consensus?
So I sort of put that in the bucket of already had consensus on the things we talked about before.
Got it.
But now let's talk about stadium, it was one of those standalone features, I think that made more sense combined with Scenario B. But there were some other ideas that emerged through board study committee conversations around just that next little layer we could, could add. Is that of interest to anyone?
Do you want to say what those are?
I can, I can, yeah. I might not paint as crisp of a picture, but to sort of, to sort of take that stadium to the, to the next layer of renovation, we do receive feedback that the bands in the stands are incredibly hard to hear. They sort of play to the field rather than to the audience. So with the proposed renovations, putting all of these concession stands, team rooms, new restrooms, that would, would be the east end of the facility, and then building a set of bleachers or stands so that the band would be there, a more prominent location that would sort of also give the stadium a slightly different feel, maybe a little more enclosed, and as we also look at these more secure entry points. How do we feel about that? Or what other pieces, remind me if I'm missing something through our conversations?
I think we discussed something about the scoreboard.
It would, it would change to the other side.
Okay, scoreboard would be moved to the, to the west side, the west end.
So what would be done at Dow then? There's a doctor of just sitting there, and that was privately funded.
So the, the community stadium would remain the community stadium
Okay.
with these additional enhancements for all teams that play there.
Okay.
And then the, I think we said there was $23 million in work that would happen over at Dow High in the athletic space.
Okay.
So where do we stand with stadium?
We certainly do not need to add $25 million to this bond proposal for a new stadium complex, but we may need to review our 6.6 million to see if that addresses current day needs at Midland Community Stadium.
So if I might just offer clarification, are you, are you indicating that you have interest in us taking a look at what those additional pieces I just mentioned would be?
Yes.
Along with that 6.6 million and seeing where we land?
Yes.
Similar to robotics, let's go do some digging and come back with a recommendation to you all? That's what you're asking?
Yes, please.
Okay, how does the rest of the group feel about that?
I'm good.
Okay, feeling consensus around that? Let's talk pool. Shared with you before sort of where the Midland Community Aquatics Committee landed with their insights on this. I believe, based on conversations through our study committees, that we recognize that's a big endeavor. Is there any interest in building a competition pool?
Your opening comments about where you're reporting where we are as a community and our important collaboration with all partners involved is, the board supports that moving forward? And that everybody is collaborative moving forward, and it's not part of this bond?
Are we at consensus on no pool?
Absolutely.
Yep.
I mean, I would love to see a pool, but as a steward of public money, it is not a good place to put our money.
Phil, we have three minutes, and I think it's important that we end cap with next step, so I think we should extend, even if just for a few minutes.
Can I get a motion to extend till 9:45?
Some more.
Second.
Support, or a motion by McFarlane, support by Ringgold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
You can, you can be begrudgingly.
Extend to 9:45.
All right, let's move on then, since we have consensus on the pool, to the auditorium conversation.
Similar to your feedback already, I would encourage you to continue investigating with Midland Center for the Arts of partnering with them and using that facility for the best times and spaces that work with our programming. And I still think that we are in a better position to use that facility than building our own standalone at this point in time.
I think the other thing that would be helpful to understand is maybe the specifics around what limitations the Center for the Arts would have and how they could be alleviated through the bond. I think one of the ideas that was proposed was basically duplicating a black box that would just resemble their stage so that rehearsals and all that sort of stuff could be done off-site, but then just the performances are done in the, in the big auditorium that they, that the community also already has as an asset. So if there are specific opportunities where a black box could be combined with a robotics center, multi-use building somehow, especially if it's jazzed-up pole barn, for lack of a better term, that'd be great, so.
Dale, are you still with us? Dale, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Could you maybe speak to that black box concept that you had previously mentioned for our performing arts?
So if I heard the discussion correctly, it would be to develop a space that you would be able to rehearse in, that would be essentially similar to what the Dow Center would have available to you for performances. And so, black box spaces are becoming more common at the high school level, not only, not so much for the purpose that you just described, but actually as standalone theater spaces, there are actually now black box competitions at the high school level. So it's something that has become sort of a new frontier in the drama and theater area, but we have planned a number of black box theater spaces in high schools in recent years. I'm not familiar with their stage area and the exact size of it to have a good feel for how that might relate to some of the ones that we've done on other high schools, but that would be something we'd have to research a little bit more to come up with a square footage. And then the big question would be where to put it. So.
Thank you.
Lot of property behind the current auditorium.
All right, how are you all feeling about Phil's idea? Well, first, Brad's comment that an auditorium isn't in the picture for us, are we in consensus about that? And then we'll come to Phil's idea. Is there anyone who is not yet at consensus about an auditorium not being part of the bond?
I think that we're all in consensus that five, six, seven, eight years from now, when we look at one high school, it will be as part of that building around the campus. So, but for now, partner with our partner and use our facility for what it can be purposed for.
So I will just add to this list of possibilities because remember, our plan is for me to take what we have strong consensus on, a few of these other pieces, and come back with a recommendation to you. So it's a quick turnaround, but we can take a look and see what that black box concept looks like, if it is feasible for us, what the cost might be around that, and bake that into a recommendation if it's possible, or I'll show up next Monday and let you know that it wasn't.
Right.
And we can move forward from there.
Well, and potentially looking at where, like from a convenience standpoint, is there a space at one of our existing high schools where it could be, you know, put or modified in that way? Because the travel, I think, is another piece that is a challenge for our drama students, so.
Okay, the other facilities mentioned in the survey comments was just an opportunity for me to remind you that CTE was mentioned, robotics was mentioned, and a field house had a mention as well. Is there any interest in conversations about any of those other facilities?
Yeah. Let's talk about a field house. So I've talked to the ADs, the athletic director at Dow, and a number of coaches, and I think it's a great idea and a good opportunity for us to add into this mix, however it fits in. Looking at the utilization of a field house, football, you've got flag football, tackle football, youth programming, baseball could use it, soccer, boys and girls, lacrosse, boys and girls, softball, band could use it, any additional sports that may come along, field hockey, I mean, I don't know, whatever sports that we may take on as a district. Almost everybody gets some use out of a field house, and I think that to allow our athletes to step up to the next level of competition and to be the best they can be and to give them the opportunity to practice and train year-round is phenomenal. And all of those sports, times two high schools and times two middle schools. So I know there's the idea of soccer wanting to build a field house for them, but they have such a massive amount of teams, that would never, we would never be able to get in to that rotation between their soccer teams using their facility. We just have too many different kids that would be able to use it. And so I think, I think you said the price was 15-ish million?
So I'm going to lean here on our colleagues. I think those were rough estimates based on what we've heard.
I think it's tremendous bang for the buck.
45,000 square feet.
We identified the east side of the current Midland Stadium because it seemed to be the location.
Yeah.
But there'd be a room for about 45,000 square foot facility in there if we were to do that, and we estimated that at about 16.7 million. And that would be a pre-teenure structure, but it's much more than a pole barn, but it is a pre-teenure structure.
Never going to live that down, I'm sorry.
Recently for Linden Schools, they've been out of that size. That doesn't fit a full football field or anything of that nature, but there is still opportunity with the men's football to do some of the things.
The one for the Linden Schools that you just did on their campus.
On their high school campus.
So ours would be where the stadium.
Adjacent to the stadium, yeah. At Midland High.
Is there, is there space to do the field house plus the concessions, locker rooms, bleachers, all of that, or does that mean we readjust?
We looked at and did some preliminary investigation and then incorporated all of those things into kind of one structure, let's say. As the time progresses, that could change a little bit, but the idea would be to wrap the east side with those facilities.
Okay.
How that ends up looking could be different than what I'm describing, but that would be the idea.
Yeah, and the concept, if it helps to add to Daryl's comment there, in Scenario A, we had included the idea of a structure at the northeast end of the field for visitors, the southeast end for a new entrance and home, and we, in this scenario of the idea of adding a field house, we would just essentially be connecting those two corners, if you will, with a structure on the east end of the stadium area. But as Daryl pointed out, it fills in that space and it might not be as large as some of the other ones that maybe people have visited or seen around the state. Some of those are quite large, maybe even double that type of square footage. So obviously you can see that to go to a much larger facility would have a much larger price tag.
This may be a silly question, but based on what I'm hearing, it sounds like you cannot play games there. It's just a practice facility?
Correct.
Okay.
And you could fit, depending on what was the priority athletically in there, you could fit a basketball floor in there, and that you could do, but from a soccer and baseball field, you would fit.
Northwood has a similar facility of what Scott's talking about on campus, their turfed facility, and it's not a full football field. It's not a full-size track, but it is...
I think it's 60 yards, 50 yards in an end zone.
I think so, and they use theirs about 22 hours out of a 24-hour day.
So the ideas on the table, what do other board members feel about that idea?
I'd like more information. I'd like to see if we're taking some of these concepts and we're combining them into a single structure, price goes down versus having them as the standalones.
You could make the case that you're building one less wall, let's say, on the exterior, but I think in the grand scheme of that number, I don't know that it's going to be significantly less expensive, let's say, to build the restroom facility. I don't know if that'd be fair to say that, but most of the cost is going to be already included in that.
But if we have new bathrooms, wouldn't they be dual-serving for that building as well as the stadium? Okay, so then that should save money in that perspective.
But just to clarify, we did already anticipate some of that efficiency in the number that we assigned to that, so.
All right.
16.7. So I heard some, I'm indifferent, I'm hearing some support. We could take a similar approach to this black box concept in that you asked me to go explore this a bit more and understand if and how it can fit in this overall program. And I think, I think that leads us into this question about what is this cost range that we want. So I guess I just want to bring clarity to that first question. Are you all indicating that you want me to go explore this further with the team and determine whether it can be part of a recommendation I bring back to you for the overall package?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So now let's talk, as we acknowledged, 277 is where we're at for those core components of Scenario A, the infrastructure, the buses, the technology, all those things that we discussed. We have discussed additional potential robotics, potential black box, potential exploration of what maybe some hybrid electric buses might look like, and now this field house. So without hard numbers for all of those components, I need some direction about what our top end here is in terms of a total dollar value.
So are we roughly in the 300 million mark? 302?
You're at 3.5 mil. Kind of doing the rough math.
Yeah, and you can use this as sort of a guide, which is why I put it back up, that 324.2, we were looking at 3.75 mils. And I want to remind us, those are approximate millage increases, right? That has to be calculated and worked out. So I think, I'm not asking that you don't think about the comparative millage rate, but that dollar value is really what's going to be in that bond application. And we have three minutes left, Phil, just to keep an eye on that if we need to extend another 10 minutes.
So where I'm at is the, I'll go back to what I said earlier. I think we need to think about what's, what are the needs for the community before we start to cut. So I'd like to see what the number comes back at. I think what came through the feedback in the survey is that over three-quarters of the people that responded to the survey acknowledged the need to spend money, and when I think about our schools, they are the fabric of our community. And as Brad talked about earlier, it's exciting to think about investing in our schools and in our children's future. So I think I'm relatively okay with the about a dollar a day per household number, which comes out to about $300 million as the median mark, but that's where my head is at.
Phil, I think we need to extend just for a couple of minutes.
Can I have somebody else, somebody make a motion to extend?
So moved.
10 o'clock.
Till 10 o'clock.
Motion by Horowitz, support by McFarland. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Go till 10.
So I hear Phil offering out this 300 million cap, looking for direction or consensus from the rest of you, and again, acknowledging that this is some guidance for the team to go back and bring a recommendation back to you, and knowing sort of that upper end is helpful. And Dale or Daryl, please chime in if there's additional detail to that that you think we need right now.
The only comment I would add is that the district's financial consultant does the final calculation.
Microphone. Sorry.
That's okay. I would just add that when PFM does their, you know, your financial consultants do the final analysis of the millage rate and what that will, what that will bring in, you know, there could be some changes there to the positive around whatever that millage rate is. So, you know, oftentimes maybe determining a millage rate can also be a way of capping things too as well, if that's of interest.
Okay, thanks for that.
Rather than a dollar amount of millage rate, okay.
Everybody okay with that moving forward and then?
Okay.
We can...
All right, that was, that was something. It's important, and I'm going to remind myself of the enthusiasm around this because it's worth it. We'll be out of here in just a minute, but I do want to just take us to what our next steps are so that we have absolute clarity about what November 18th is going to look like. In a very quick turnaround, this team is going to take what you've reached as our consensus points and those other spots to dig deeper. We're going to build out the next layer of detail, and that's what we will be bringing to you. I will bring it to you in the form of a recommendation on the 18th. We'll have one more chance to really grapple with this, reach final consensus about the proposal, because when I come back to you on December 16th, that will be with a resolution that has the specific ballot language and that bond application. So I want to just impress upon you all that November 18th is really that moment where we're going to need to be completely in alignment with what that is. I want to continue to ask you if you have questions or need additional clarity about any of these pieces between now and next Monday, that you reach out to me, or Brian, or Ken, or Jeff, or Anna, and we can get you those answers and information that's necessary. I think that will make for an efficient but important conversation on the 18th. Any final comments, Phil?
First of all, thank you to our community for your participation and feedback. Absolutely important that we have it. I think it's, again, schools have to think in decades, not in years or months. So as we move forward with this process, you know, I think we're moving forward with Proposal A because it's what we can do with our community that addresses the most important needs in the district, which are space alleviation constraints at the elementary level, setting up the space to grow our pre-K programs, and then replace a building that is at the end of its useful life. And Brad's absolutely right. This is an exciting moment for our schools and one that we will continue to grow with if we get the blessing of our taxpayers. So one step in the process, but thanks for sticking with us and driving to consensus.
Yeah, I appreciate that we stayed aligned to our working agreements and we're in a good spot. All right, and I want to echo what you said. Happy Veterans Day. Being married to a veteran, I just want to put that out there publicly. Appreciate everyone's service and hope you properly celebrated today. All right, I think we're ready.
John, you want to make the motion?
Support.
Any opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
End adjourned. Adhere.